goes out and let him come back with this revised map. It also goes on and states that the chief's opinion is that if we're wanting to regulate the business along the highway, the council should pass a resolution directing the mayor's office to negotiate with the highway department to obtain permission to impose regulations. If we're concerned about the 62, and I think there are concerns there with the safety and the traffic and everything, then we should look at that issue, what the chief is. Otherwise, I think we just need to go ahead and give some directions to the applicant so he can come back and with a completed application.
Mr. Weber.
If the council believes that portion of these routes, or a portion of this route, I guess it's the proper term, are not feasible due to the concerns addressed in Chief Hyatt's letter, the council ultimately approves the route, you could remove those inconsistent parts, other than I don't believe you can remove the state and federal highway at this point, but you could remove the Dairy Hollow and the Judah Street and other concerns that the council may have, if you want to proceed, because it does appear that you have information from the chief of what he is concerned about, but also that he has viewed the map.
You better ask.
I would make a motion that we remove the portions of the route as stipulated by Chief Hyatt's letter dated October 27, 2011.
I would suggest that that include not the language in regard to the highways, but only the other, the surface streets that are the cities, so that we don't get in a conflict with this, with the highway department over controlling their...
Yeah, without a doubt that the stipulation would state that it does not address the state highways.
This man.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Was that a motion?
Okay, I got a motion.
Was that a motion?
I have a second over here. I amended my motion. Second the amendment?
Yes.
We're in discussion.
Yeah, I know we're in discussion.
Is there a minimum speed for state highways?
A minimum speed for state highways?
Yeah, I know there's a maximum speed, but is there a minimum speed?
No, not one that is conceivable that would prevent horse-drawn carriages.
Oh, okay.
There is for interstate.
Mr. Pan.
That restricts bicycles and other conveyances on interstates.
Mr. Pan.
For what's worth and my father-in-law, that stuff done on 23rd going too slow for nothing. But I would be concerned with, it also states that no animal-drawn vehicle for hired drivers shall solicit passengers for hire except at the depot. And I thought I heard earlier that someone could stop and wave down carriage if they knew that, you know, the loading zone like out here at the courthouse, you know, say, hey, meet me up at the courthouse, there's a loading zone up there, that's not scheduling a stop at the depot. Granted, the, all the ancillary information that we've been given allows carriages to operate outside of our control on state highways, but it also says we control what happens within the city limits. So if we, if we say that there's a pre-approved route and all I've, all I'm seeing is initials of the, that's been validated as the police chief's, I don't know if he's saying that he's approving that or he's just seen it. And then it still hasn't been pre-approved by council, which is, I believe, what we're trying to do here, but then we've got the next step of making sure, following the code, that it doesn't overlap on any of the other two routes. Do we have that information here to be able to determine if that route map has and does that apply to state highways? Because the other two routes, or at least one of them, operates on a state highway, which says that, I'm, I think we're...
There's a motion on the floor, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
Yes.
But you're in discussion right now. Okay. I'm gonna reread the motion so everybody knows who it was.
Mr. DeVito moved to remove portions of the route that were of concern, listed in Chief Hyatt's letter and Mr. Raphael seconded.
And was there not an amendment?
Was there a further action on excluding state highways?
Yeah.
I'm gonna take a real call of that.
Excuse me, at this moment, I believe all recuse.
Just clarification.
Do you ask permission, leave the table, man?
Call the board.
Clarification. The letter we're referring to is October 27th letter?
Yes, that was what I stated in the proposal.
Which does not, which does not address the no on the map of Magnetic Road unless I'm missing something, it just says, doesn't think Dairy Hollow Road from Clear Springs to Pivot Rock and Armstrong from Maine to Judah. What I'm, so if we're following the letter, then the map conflicts with the letter. If you can, I'd like to make that a second motion. Form in this one.
So we're gonna do a roll call on this?
First motion unless there's gonna be a second motion to see proceeded.
So you ready to proceed?
Okay. The letter doesn't say anything about Magnetic, doesn't address Magnetic at all, but on the map it shows that Magnetic is accessed off of 23 all the way up to the back end. It's a, it's the Passion Play or Spring, Magnetic Spring.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Was the motion to approve the route as the map with the exception of?
No. The motion was to exclude the concerns of Chief Hyatt from the route as per his letter.
James, I understood when you said it that you were talking about council's concerns and the chief's concerns. Is that incorrect?
Council's concerns would be reflected in their vote.
So you're talking just about the chief?
Does that approve the route with the changes Chief Hyatt referred to?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to amend his motion to include the exclusionary portion shown on the map that Earl Hyatt approved on 10/13, Magnetic Road to Passion Play Road.
Second. It's only part of it. It's only half of Magnetic.
Right. As shown on, oh, it's shown on his map.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Does anybody understand the motion? We need to reread it one more time.
I'd like to do the amendment first.
I'm sorry? Yeah, okay. All right. There's a motion on the table to amend the original motion to include the portion from Magnetic Springs Park all the way up to Passion Play Road. Is there a second?
A second.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, to exclude. To exclude. To exclude Magnetic Road.
It's in the county. You can't regulate it anyway, it's in the county.
Part, part and part. He said he's got no on the map, that's the reason.
Can I explain the no?
Yeah. Motion.
The no is from the Springs to...
Right, that's what we were talking about, yeah.
Yeah, but he didn't want me to, because it's too far.
But we can't anyway because it's in the county.
Yeah, but we, we've got the Spring.
Yeah, I wanna go to the Spring and turn around. I mean, is that okay with you all?
We'll find out.
Yeah, we will. Okay. Do you want to reread the motion?
Second.
Okay. Is there a second on the amendment?
Yeah, there was a second.
You did, okay. All right, we'll vote on the amended part first.
My understanding is that Butch suggested amending the original motion by including all those...
No.
By including the exclusionary portion marked on the map by the chief.
Of Magnetic Road.
From Magnetic Springs.
That's the only portion marked.
From Magnetic Springs.
To Passion Play.
To Passion Play Road.
Okay.
Vote on the amended part first. On the amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Balance. Now we'll go back to the amended motion in its entirety or in its whole. All in favor of the amended motion including the amendment?
Go back up to the original?
Yes, yes.
To remove the portions that Chief Hyatt listed in his letter, excluding state highways. Do you want that to be a roll call or voice?
Yeah, it's a real call.
She can check my file.
No, sir, you can't talk. You can't talk. We're in the middle of something here.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Raphael?
Yes.
Mr. Pennon?
No.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Four yeses, one no, one recuse.
Four, two.
Okay, so the route's approved.
So the route's approved. Is that correct? The franchise is approved.
What chief?
No.
Yeah, as the motion stated, yeah.
Hyatt was concerned about and what's on the map.
Yeah, okay. All right. Need to say further on this?
That doesn't, that doesn't approve the franchise. That just approved the route.
Just approved the route, okay. All right. So the issue on the agenda is to deal with the franchise. Yes, sir?
I don't have the, our code in front of us, but what overlapping routes? 2806? I'm changing where we, because the street is being proven, each franchise, top and down, designated, franchise, unless otherwise pre-approved. Well, if we approve the route, then it's pre-approved.
So the, the application for the franchises, you've just changed the route, approved the route, so the franchise issue still on the table.
I would move to approve the application for animal-drawn vehicle franchise by Mr. Ray Dotson.
Second.
May I second it? All in favor, say aye.
Discussion?
Okay, sorry, yes, discussion. I thought we discussed it to death.
Ain't dead yet, but we've no sense beating a dead horse.
As bad as me.
Whoops. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So one more time with the, I'm sorry. So I'm still, could Mr. Dotson come to the microphone?
Yes, he can.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Back to, back to number five again. And if I understand you, you'll be picking up only on state highways. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Either that or outside the city limits.
Okay, so the number five is a moot point. Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Anybody else want to hit the mic? Okay. So where we at, guys? I don't think we had a motion.
Yeah, we did, to approve the franchise.
Prove.
And a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I want you to be a real call.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Dr. Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Mr. Pennon?
No.
Mr. Raphael?
No.
Three, two, one, recuse.
Three, two, one, recuse, yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure that you can vote in this one instance.
Okay.
Because the language that Ms. Balance read before she left the room indicated the elected members of the table, and there are certain instances in which the mayor's vote is not allowed.
Motion failed.
Can we tell them again?
No, sir, not tonight, we can't. No, it's, it's a done issue, tell them next time. You can reapply if you see a wish. Okay. Thank you for coming. Okay.
Ain't right, from the vote of the majority of the members elected to council.
All right, number two on the agenda for unfinished business?
We have a 10-minute wait. New business.
Yeah, new business.
Wow.
She's, she's been here waiting for 30 minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, under new business number two, Kelly Walker's broken window, Ms. Balance missed town.
Move to discuss.
Second?
Second.
All right, floor's open.
As I said, I'd like to give my time for her to re-express her situation.
Well, basically, I work at the flower shop and I don't have the money to pay for the windshield that I didn't break. It was the city's fault, the city worker broke my windshield and I tried to go through the city insurance and they won't help me at all, so I don't have the money for it. I, I just need to get my windshield fixed or pay the body shop. It's less than $300.
That was my question, which how much is, is it?
You should have it in your paperwork as to what the claim was.
I do.
Thank you.
Do you have it?
I don't have it. 262 and you know, that's your understanding?
Yep.
I don't have it either.
Yeah, that's the total that I'm asking for.
This must, from last time.
Okay, Mr. Refusal.
Does the city not have a procedure in place for situations like this? I mean, this is pretty common.
Yes, sir, bring it to the council.
There we go.
That's the procedure.
Yeah.
I can't make that decision. I can't express money on it.
If you vote on who writes the check?
I'm sorry?
If you vote on who writes the check?
Do you direct the finance director, take it out of some, some department, somebody's budget? Make sure the money's in there.
I guess this is directed to the city attorney, kind of in conjunction with what the mayor just said. If a department addressed this and said they were willing to cover it under their equipment coverage, is that not allowable? Or is she saying that breaking the window, this Linda Montgomery at the municipal property program is, general liability claim isn't covered?
The state law requires that the city is toward immune for all that it is not insured for. If there is a dispute of whether we have coverage or not, that would have to be worked out between the city and our carrier, which is the municipal insurance fund. If you believe that we are covered, we need to follow procedure and address that with the municipal property program. If you do not believe we are covered, then you have to decide whether to act in a manner that is inconsistent with our toward immunity and to grant her a payment that is inconsistent with the current state law that gives the city toward immunity unless otherwise covered by insurance. You can do that, but it's a slippery slope.
Yes.
So if that'd been a public works truck that ran over her car instead of a weed eater that threw a rock through it, it would have been, damages would have been covered?
It would have been covered under the current insurance policy if a city truck runs into another vehicle.
But if my child would have died due to the rock hitting his head, it still wouldn't be covered. I just think that's asinine. How can they be performing work if they're not completely covered for it? Because accidents do happen and something bad could have happened. I don't see how they're able to weed eat at all on basically rocks if they're not covered.
Who sent it, what's going on?
No motion yet.
I make a motion that we approve the expenditure of $262 to repair Ms. Walker's window and 89 cents as per her report.
Second. You need to direct where that's coming from, as in the general fund, but you need to make that part of your motion. Otherwise, there's nowhere for it to come from. Can it happen out of public works?
How about loss and damages?
I think public works.
You need to pick the spot.
Public works.
You need to make sure if it's out of public works, that it's not out of money that is designated by state law for road repair or construction, because there are certain funds that cannot be expended for anything else.
Since you can tell us where it can't come from, could you please tell us where it could come from?
It can come out of the general fund.
All right.
Put that in your motion?
Yeah, out of the general fund.
Second.
Second.
He needs to amend his. Whoever seconded.
Mr. Raphael?
You okay, boys?
All in favor, say aye.
One of order.
We called a phone order.
I did.
Okay.
Did he amend his second? Just for record clarification, okay.
You withdrew?
No.
He amended his second, second to the amendment.
Did he amend his proposal?
Okay. Before we do this now, I think we're gonna set a precedent here.
We already did with Wells.
Okay. All right, long as you're aware of it, it's same knocking on the door. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Great, thank you all very much. So what do I do now?
Check next week.
Check here.
Check with the clerk.
Back in six months.
Checks in my own.
Okay, great, thank you all.
Checks in my own.
You're welcome, we're really sorry.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Move for recess?
Yes, 10 minutes. All in favor, say aye. All right, 10 minutes. Back here.
Motion is discussed.
Second.
Floor's open. Everybody should have a copy of it. We've had this for a couple, at least last meeting. You posted one that said this made, everybody take a look at it.
resolution.
For discussion.
For discussion purposes only.
May I second it? Prefer discussion? All in favor, say aye.
No, no.
No, no, this is to discuss.
To discuss.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, discussion's open.
Resolution amending the adopted 2011 budgets for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas as a result of the mid-year budget review process. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas has made a comprehensive study and review of the current budget, and whereas in the opinion of the city council, the 2011 fiscal budget should be amended to reflect the following changes in both revenue and expenditure budgetary amounts as set forth hereafter. Now therefore, be resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one. This resolution shall be known as the 2011 mid-year budget resolution for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2011 and ending December 31, 2011. The attached documents present revisions to estimates for revenues and expenditures for the period. All revenues and appropriations are based on estimated revenues and all estimates are subject to change during the budgetary period, section two. The amounts for revenues and expenditures proposed in this 2011 mid-year amended budget are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth in the calendar year ending December 31, 2011. The amendments are as follows. General fund revenue. Line 01004504, grant funds, state issued, increase $24,396. Line item 01004503, federal grant revenue increased by $428,979. Expenses, general fund expenses. Line item 01005758, federal grant expense increase $343,525. Expense, line item 0110... Expense, line item zero one, one zero, five zero one five, retirement distribution, increase fifteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Expense line item zero one, one zero, five zero two zero, employee health insurance, increase six thousand dollars. Expense line item zero one, one zero, five zero four oh, workman's comp trust, increase two hundred dollars. General fund expense line zero one, one one, five three zero one, supplies, office and operating, increase one thousand, one hundred dollars. Expense line zero one, one one, five five three zero, travel, education and dues, decrease by one thousand, one hundred dollars. Expense line zero one, one one, fifty-six hundred, miscellaneous expense, increase one hundred dollars. Expense line zero one, one two, five zero one zero, retirement contribution, increase one thousand, two hundred dollars. Expense line zero one, one four, five five one two, maintenance equipment, decrease fifteen hundred dollars. Expense line item zero one, one four, five five three zero, travel, education dues, increase fifteen hundred dollars. Expense line zero one, one four, five five four one, insurance property, increase three thousand, one hundred dollars. Expense line zero one, one four, five five nine zero, small equipment, increase fourteen thousand, eighteen dollars. Street fund, revenue, line item one zero, zero zero, four zero zero five, federal grant revenue, increased by four hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. Revenue line item one zero zero zero, forty-five oh three, grants, state aid, increase ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. On the expense side, line item, expense side, line item one zero, zero zero, five five one six, maintenance streets, decrease forty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Expense line item one zero, zero zero, five five three zero, travel, education and dues, increased by seven hundred and fifty dollars. Street fund expense line item one zero zero zero, five 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 zero, telephone, decrease one thousand dollars. Expense line one zero, zero zero, five five six zero, utilities, increase four thousand dollars. Expense line one zero, zero zero, five five seven two, professional services, increase forty thousand dollars. Expense line one zero, zero zero, fifty-five ninety, FEMA disaster expense, increase two hundred and fifteen thousand, eighty-seven dollars. Expense line one zero, zero zero, fifty-eight hundred, capital expenditures, decrease by twenty-five thousand dollars.
I better not.
Okay, general capital revenue. Line item twelve, zero zero, forty-five hundred, loan proceeds, increase three hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. On the expense side, line item twelve, zero zero, fifty-eight thirty-six, sidewalks to school project, increase fifty-three thousand dollars. Expense line twelve, three three, fifty-eight hundred, capital expense by EMS, increase three hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Expense line twelve, fourteen, five eight oh six, principal expense ambulance loan, increase nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Expense line twelve, fourteen, five eight two five, interest on the expense for the ambulance loan, increase five thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Water sewer expenses, line item eighty, twenty-one, fifty-three oh one, supplies, office and operating, decrease seven hundred and fifty dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-one, fifty-five twelve, maintenance equipment, decrease five thousand dollars. Water sewer expense line eighty, twenty-one, fifty-five sixty, utilities, decrease three thousand dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-one, fifty-five sixty-two, power for pumps, increase three thousand dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-three oh one, supplies, office and operating, increase seven hundred and fifty dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-five eleven, maintenance building, decrease one thousand dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-five sixty-two, lift station maintenance, increase nine thousand dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-five seventy-two, professional services, increase five thousand dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-five ninety-five, disposal of sludge, increase by three thousand dollars. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-six oh three, loss and damages, decrease by five thousand. Expense line eighty, twenty-two, fifty-five ninety-six, permits and fees, decrease nine hundred and eighty dollars.
Discussion? Okay. It's okay.
We were not able to find any funds for the cemetery?
No, Little Rock's still working on that one.
Excuse me?
Go ahead. We can't discuss it here right now.
No.
Because it's not on the agenda to discuss, but I'll talk to you.
Okay.
After the fact.
Oh, so the short answer is no.
Let's just tell you this. I have, uh, addressed municipal league about what the process would be for getting a volunteer cemetery tax on the next ballot, or a volunteer cemetery contribution on the next ballot for people to come in and pay on their, uh, uh, city taxes. It'd be a contribution. It will not be a mandatory at all.
But we couldn't find any cash whatsoever at this time to help the cemetery opt? Oh, shucks, that's too bad. Okay, then.
Do you have a proof?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
On general fund expenses, line item zero one, one zero, five zero one five, is in litigation. I don't think it would be wise for us to approve this at this moment, so I would like to, I would move to strike that line from this mid-year budget review process.
What was that again?
Line item one zero, excuse me. General fund expenses, line item zero one, one zero, five zero one five, retirement distribution. That particular item is actually in litigation right now and has not been resolved. So I think it would be remiss of us to approve this before it has been resolved. So I moved to strike that.
Are those, are those already moved, uh, being paid? Is that being paid?
I don't know.
Of course, I know these are.
We can't, if it's been paid.
These are expenses that have been paid.
If it's being paid, we can't strike it. We've got to keep it in there. If it gets, if it gets challenged in court, uh, then we'll get it back.
Mr. Brown?
This line item has never been approved, has never been approved, and yet it's being paid. I'm not sure that's legal and it's probably unethical, so I would suggest.
That was just my opinion that it's been paid. I don't know.
Well, then, let's, I move that we strike this line item. Because I will not vote in favor of this budget resolution with that line item included.
Mr. Panell?
I would like to go back, just for the record. I know some of this was probably discussed in a budget workshop. It's been so long ago, my, my brain is, uh, not certain, but I requested this be postponed last meeting because we had no bond from finance here, and that's exactly the reason why I moved that, was because there's nobody here to answer these types of questions. I have a real problem even saying yes or no, or even abstaining on this resolution in approving something that I don't feel totally comfortable with.
It can be tabled again? Mr. Brown?
I'll withdraw my motion and move to table this until the next meeting.
I have a motion on the floor already.
Motion is?
Wasn't probably there.
Yeah, I didn't think it was.
I find it inappropriate that, uh, counsel is engaging in, uh, discussion of an item that is involved with her family in litigation against the city. If there was ever a reason to recuse somebody from a motion, it would be this one.
Mr. Refill, you had your hand up too, sir?
Well, I don't, if we're gonna postpone it, I think we should have Eli here.
Yeah. Well. We can postpone it. First, let's take care of this first. If you're gonna postpone it till the next meeting, so the motion's postponed, there was a second, is that correct?
I didn't hear a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you. Four two zero. Postponed till the next meeting, it looks like. All right. Number four ordinance to list taxis, limousines, pardon me, hotel motel shuttles as separate business licenses. I'll defer to Ms. Clerk. Madam Clerk, it's clear.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Well, my reasoning is the same as it was last time. Now that we're closer to the end of the year, the second version is written. If you feel that you want to have an emergency clause. My understanding from Speaker Mr. Weaver is previous councils have read and passed ordinances three times without emergency clause, but we have both available, depending on which way you do this.
Mr. Panell?
Other than section two, why are we, why are we? I guess my bottom line would be, why this ordinance to start with? We have, taxis and limousines are covered in the fee schedule already. The only thing that's new is requiring hotel motel shuttles to get a separate business license.
There's an inherent problem in having the two together in the versions license section. The laws governing limousines by the state, by the Department of Transportation, are different from the laws governing taxis, taxi franchises. By putting them together and turning someone loose with this license, it allows limousines to behave as taxis. By, there's a, there's a snarl in the clerk's office because of that. This is step one in untangling the snarl that was created years ago. Limousines are to be by appointment. Taxis can be spontaneous. You can flag down a taxi. You're not supposed to be able to flag down a limousine. That's the most basic problem, and there are more.
Is that in city ordinance?
Is what in city ordinance?
That requirement. Or is it another one where we're just? The definition of limousine versus taxi, because the only thing that's in the city ordinance is, uh, definition of taxi service. I think if we want to step further and define limousine service versus taxi service, uh, there wouldn't be as much concern, but, uh, I think we're hashing over a slash mark that, uh...
Mr. Panell? Please, let me assure you that because I deal with these folks on a regular basis and the business licenses and the complaints and the people coming into my office saying, "Mr. so-and-so is acting like a taxi," I say, "I understand. Let's try to untangle this." Step one is separating them. They're apples and oranges. And it is time to send out the business license renewal forms. They are going out in the mail as we speak. They're being transported by the postal service. It will take a very long time to go through the laws in a workshop. This is one simple step in the direction of untangling this mess, and I don't ask for it lightly or frivolously.
Did you review this?
I've seen it, yes.
What's your opinion about?
I disagree with what Madam Clerk said about the enforcement issue, but I do understand the confusion it creates. It has created, uh, for some time. Uh, and at least two previous councils, I think, have discussed separating the two, but it's never been done. This is the first time I've seen it actually drawn into either a resolution or an ordinance. And I think it would be a step to eliminating some of the confusion potentially. But, uh, I don't think enforcing the taxi franchise laws is, requires this. Or enforcing any restrictions on limousines that may be in state law requires this. It's more a matter of confusion than enforcement, in my opinion.
Please ask Chief Ayotte.
You further? Mr. Panell?
Should there not be a direct reference, the changes in the city code versus just saying business license and fee schedule, which is actually four point three, six point oh four in the code? And I still say we need a definition of limousine service, or we're... I can understand the need for separation, but the other thing that bothers me is now all of a sudden we're throwing on here...